All set.
So I'm calling to order the Dyson Commission on Disability Meeting. The date is Thursday, November 4th. The time is, I think about four forty-two P M. First thing I'd like to do before we do anything else is take a moment of silence for residents of Dayton, who have passed away from COVID or any other reason and/or who are simply just not feeling well. And I'm going to add to that Ken's mom, since she is no longer with us and passed away yesterday. All right, we are good. Thank you guys very much. I appreciate I appreciate that. So in the call to order, there were three of us here, so I'm going to ask each of us to simply say whom we are if we could. I am Jonathan Gale. I am the ADA Coordinator for the Town of Dayton and the Chair of the ADA Commission. Kevin?
Kevin Smith, member.
Nicole?
Nicole Mello, member.
Thank you both very much. We did the introductions, we did the pledge and the welcome, so thank you very much. So for committee reports, I'll start with the committee reports to get a couple of things going. I'll talk about the community garden first. Nicole, we haven't had any community garden meetings as you're a member of the subcommittee and myself and Ken is. What we did have is they met at the community garden to construct the boxes. And what I noticed when they construct the boxes is there were eight boxes that were being constructed. None of those boxes were met the ADA criteria. And I know the original proposal was a little bit different, so I'm reaching out to Jen and Tanya to have a conversation so that the subcommittee can get together with them. And we can discuss next steps to make sure that we are following what was agreed to with regard to ADA criteria and ADA accessibility, and that's going to be for the boxes. It's also going to be for the shed, which is not in the original spot that we all understood it was going to be. So we need to make sure of that, too. And then also for the surfacing and in the surfacing part of it, for the areas that would need to be ADA accessible. We, in our grant for the hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, asked for quite a bit of green, what's called green matting. It's kind of a rough, it's a surface where grass can go through, but it's a thick rubber surface that's movable and transportable and can be used in different locations. So we asked for about forty-five hundred square feet of that roughly for the community garden. So if we get the grant, then we will have that available. If not, then we will need to work with the folks doing the community garden to find an alternative resource for that type of surfacing or a different kind of surfacing. So again, we haven't had a meeting yet. Stay tuned because I'm hoping that we'll have a meeting with Jen and Tanya within the next two weeks or so, and I will obviously make sure that you and Ken are aware so we can all be part of it.
Excellent.
The next thing would be for policies and procedures for town to review policy and procedure. With so many other things going on, I haven't gotten back to Jen on that recently to get what she and Jocelyn have put together. I need to get to that so that I think Nicole, you and I had talked about working on that. So that if I can get that in short order, because now I'm back on track with things, then you and I can meet and start to put that together as well, so that we can have that available to do as a presentation for town departments and town commissions and committees and so forth. Kevin, do you want to discuss anything related to parks and rec?
So yeah, stuff we have going on with Parks and Rec also ties back in, which we're going to, I think we're going to talk about it. And the look in our next thing is just some of the walkways and other things that we proposed through the MOD grant to make accessible routes throughout pretty much all the parks in town with the exception of Tricentennial. So I'm trying to actually look up right now so we can do, when we get to that, I can do some screen sharing just to catch Nicole up on some of the stuff that we worked on through the grant process.
So do you want to hold off on that for a minute?
Yes, please.
Okay, no worries. And then with regard to other subcommittee work, we haven't really had any other subcommittee work. There's been so much going on with other directions and other things in town. Unfortunately, we kind of got sidetracked a little while here for the past couple of months. I'm hoping now with a lot of things behind us that we'll get back on track. The other thing that would help separately and we'll get to it in business is finding a few good new members who are interested in joining and participating. We can always use folks so that we have, you know, more members to be participating in the committee. So I'm always going to be saying that and hopefully we can get people. But in terms of other committees, we haven't had much going on yet. I will say we were involved. While we're waiting here, it's not really a subcommittee, but in the temporary library environment, we were involved in looking where the trailers has gone in terms of the ramp being put in and being put in place and the base of the ramp and the connection to the sidewalk area and the parking area. So there's a little bit of work potentially to be done there still. But for the most part, that that particular part of the process is complete. I have ordered the the rail for the lock boxes behind Town Hall and hopefully that rail was supposed to be in about a week ago and hasn't come in yet. Once it comes in, I will give it to Mike and Mark and they can determine how it's going to be placed on the boxes, but that should be done as well. Right now I do not, as I said, have any other committee reports as of yet, so we can move to the next item. If Kevin is ready, which is the grant submission. And what I will say is we, before Kevin shares his screens or anything, we submitted a grant for a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars to the Mass Office of Disability. And this was based on, for the most part, the KMA report and recommendations in the report. Within that money that we're asking for, the hundred and fifty-three thousand, above and beyond that is approximately about seventy-five thousand dollars in in-kind commitment from the town. And that's for removal of, for example, dirt and sidewalk and breaking up areas and things that Tom's department can do, things that the building department can do and other departments can do. So the actual total value of the grant, if it's approved, is almost two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. But the one fifty-three is the ask. We will probably hear on that. I was actually in a little meeting earlier where somebody from MOD said that the answers on that should be going out in a couple of weeks. I do know that I don't know how many they're going to fund, but I know they had over a hundred and twenty applicants asking for dollars. And I don't know where we fit into that scheme of things, except that we should get a fair amount of points because we're doing a lot of things that were recommended in the KMA report. I know Kevin's going to show that some drawings of the schematics that we've done, so I'm going to leave it to Kevin for a minute here to share some more about what we've done in the grant.
Can you guys see the, I have the grass mats up, but I'm not sure if you can see them.
Yes, I can see one. Is it one?
No, so that, just to give, because I was trying to pull it up earlier when Jonathan was talking about the community garden. So that the grass, that's the grass mat material that we had talked about using and we ordered through the grant. We just ordered like a surplus to use throughout different playgrounds and then also at the community garden. And the nice thing about this is it can be put, could be gravel, could be wood chips, could be grass, and it's kind of like a universal matting. If you put it over grass, the grass can grow through it. You can still mow it. It looks like grass, but it gives you like, you know, full wheelchair access on top of grass. So that was that product that he had talked about in regards to the community garden.
I have one question about that, Kevin. Do we know like the longevity of that? How long that material will last? Um, sounds pretty durable from what you're.
So it is, it's about, it's a little over and just over an inch thick, so it's pretty heavy. And there are three by five sections that go into, they can, they interconnect with each other with almost like Ziploc type of joints. So they're they're movable and, you know, if, for example, we were to have something on the, in the track area, the public track area by the playground, and we needed to take some from somewhere else temporarily for a day or two. We could so that we could provide, you know, access down to the track area that, you know, right now we're not able to provide, and then we can put it back where it was. So it's fully mobile. The longevity of it, Nicole, is the Architectural Access Board did a study on it for three years to see how durable it would hold up in terms of cold weather, warm weather, ice, snow, heavy rain, etc., you know, mud under it, the whole bit. And all I know is that after the three years, it was as solid as adorable as it was from day one.
Okay.
Yeah, it's showing here that it has a five-year guarantee. But yeah, I'm assuming like Jonathan was saying, if the Architectural Access Board is, is, you know, endorsing the product, it must be pretty good. All right, Jonathan, I'm going to swing over to Dropbox and just kind of go over our exhibits. I'll just kind of pull those up.
Okay. So let me know when you have them up there. While Kevin is pulling them up until he tells me they're visually. Nicole, we, one of the, we focused on, as I said, things that are in the report and then some. So we focused on a few of the playgrounds and sidewalk connection from the parking area, not the parking lot themselves, because that's dead, that's different dollars. But we focus from the parking areas where the handicap spots are for sidewalks to the playground areas and also to the picnic areas. And slightly maybe changing some of that around as well, the picnic areas. And the goal was to give people with disability, again, different forms of disability, don't need to repeat at all, access to be able to get so they can sit at a bench, they can go over to the playground where their kids or grandkids might be playing or play themselves if they're young kids and so forth in a wheelchair or something. So we've made these sidewalk areas, we hope if it's approved, fully accessible for different parts, different playgrounds. We've also, for example, talked about the Town Hall ramp, which we all know is in drastic need of change.
Jonathan, the first one I pulled, not to interrupt you, that's the first one I pulled up is um, town, the Town Hall walkway.
Okay, so the walkway there, the thought was, and Kevin can talk more about it in a second. The thought with the walkway was that as opposed to having a ramp, we would have a long extended, I'm going to use the term winding walkway, that has, you know, nice, eventually if it goes through, would have shrubs around it or bushes and be a walkway with a railing going up one side of it so that we provide the railing as well, but it would keep us way below the grade we have to. And yes, it would be a walkway that goes around. There would be steps for cut through for people who want it. But it would give the front of the Town Hall an entirely different look. It would connect to the parking lot with a walkway correctly so that when people come out of disability, vans, wheelchair vans of any sort, they can exit to the front and go up onto a sidewalk area as opposed to behind it potentially. It also links up the street area to the sidewalk. So we're hoping this gets funded as well. And again, this is part of the in-kind component that the town would be doing to, you know, take everything that's there and move it away as well. So Kevin, I'll let you go now. I'll stop.
Yeah, so real quick, all of, just so you know, Nicole, all of our, the drawings are kind of like rough rendering. So they're kind of subject to change, and we were just trying to give the MOD an idea of what we were thinking. So like, as you, and you know how what the Town Hall looks like, so that there's nothing there now. So we'd have this walk, a walkway, the sidewalk that would span the entire parking lot. And it's not shown here, but it'll actually go back up where it'll catch the sidewalk on Somerset Ave. So like anybody, you know, any foot traffic would be able to walk down through here. And then Mr. Ferry had met with the concrete contractor and they had proposed to make it a walkway instead of a ramp that we would have to have a couple turns and landings. But it does afford us the unique opportunity to be able to kind of dress up the landscape of the front of Town Hall as well and also incorporate a set of steps, like probably somewhere in this blank region in the middle so that you wouldn't have to walk the entire walkway to get in. You could kind of cut through and use the steps to get right to the front door. And also part of this project is, which was cited on the KMA report, is the actual landing that's present now at the front door. That would get replaced as well, as well as the threshold to the door, so that we'd have a completely accessible path from the parking lot and the existing sidewalk on the street all the way into the building, so.
Kevin, if you want to go over the other, if you want the other, for the other parks, if you want to, it's up to you.
Yeah, I'll just kind of, we'll zip through them quick so that we're not.
Thank you.
Figures I lost it.
Nicole, while Kevin is, Kevin just shut me up when you need to. While Kevin is pointing this up, Nicole, we also, we got in, we got an estimate to do the old Town Hall ramp, the old Town Hall ramp that we requested the variance was approved for the ramp indoors, and we submitted a request to do that as well. We got the cost figures involved. It's approximately ten thousand dollars. We put that into this grant rather than doing an ask to the town if it gets approved. And then that also includes some other work on the Old Town Hall as well. We've also put in this grant to redo the lavatories upstairs at Newtown Hall and other lavatories downstairs to do some work on the Old Town Hall on the indoor area and the lavatory area downstairs in a lower level where the Board of Health right now and Jim and Jim are located. So again, if that goes through, we've also put in this an ask to begin working on the website. That's a fifteen thousand dollar ask, which is a low ask to completely revamp the town's website because it is not at all accessible at this point in terms of our needs. It's accessible in some respects, but it will require revamping ultimately. And we need, we don't even know if the company who eventually will have a contract has the ability for that. So we'll be working with the TA to see where that contract is going to go so that whoever has the contract to manage in the future has, either has the ability to do that or we can contract separately to have it done based on this grant. Those are a few of the things that we've put in for as well. You know, there's, there's a number of little things we've asked for here as well, and I think if Kevin, if you're ready, I'll be quiet.
Well, so Jonathan, yeah, I just, as you're talking, I'm trying to pull up things that you're talking about, so it's relative. So these are our bathroom floor plans where we changed one, the door widths and the way they swing. There'll also be electronic door openers on those reconfiguration of the stall partitions and the way those door swings work to create the right. Because we had a, there was a conflict there with having the right clearances on the lap side, so we changed the way the door swings. And then we also proposed that along the walls where the grab bars were wrong, instead of having to relocate the toilets, which would have been like a massive overhaul, given the way, the style of the construction that we would build a false wall along here and be able to, and they would bring our rear grab bar to the right distance and the side grab bar to the right distance from center. So this is just reflective of the men's and women's restrooms that are on the main level of Town Hall. So those are, those are all kind of, those aren't me, the, there's nothing really major going on in there. It's all kind of little fix. I mean, it all adds up, but it's all little fixes to kind of make the bathrooms correct. Back into Jonathan talked about. So just to kind of give you a quick, what we talked about at some of the parks here. So this is the basketball courts and tennis courts at on one thirty-eight, we did show a representation of a parking lot, which, you know, isn't part of the overall project. But here, along this section here, we had talked to the concrete contractor there and that what they were going to do is we're going to do a five-foot wide band of concrete along the entire distance of the courts from gate to gate. So there'll pretty much be a flat entry from this side of the parking lot into the tennis courts. And then coming down this, you'll be able to access the other gate coming up this way. And there'll also be a couple steps here, so like regular foot traffic can get up into the basketball court gate, which is right around here. And then we'll also probably utilize some of the grass mats to access the picnic area, which is over here. And this actually, the first picnic table right here already is set up with one removed bench. So it does have wheelchair seating at that one table. And all the tables that we have pretty much throughout all the parks in town are adaptable. So we can add or remove seating on either side as we wish, if we want to increase or reconfigure accessible wheelchair seating.
And with most of them, we can get at least two wheelchairs per table comfortably on one side.
Correct. And then that's the report. So this is Lane Field, which is oh, sorry. On the bottom part of Mean Street. So again, what's that?
No, that was my phone, sorry.
That's okay. So same thing here where we have a proposed parking lot and then this area, the whole, that whole playground area is fenced in right now. And there are two openings in the fences that, you know, are accessed to the, it's all grass. So we'll have a sidewalk area or walkway area leading from the proposed parking lot. And then we were going to ban along the entire fence down. And there's also the ball field there and create walkways to where the current, you know, dugouts and bleachers are. So you'll be able to access from the parking lot in a couple different directions to get into the play area and to the ball field. And then we created walkways and then concrete skirting so that the dugout benches and the bleachers would be fully accessible. And then also currently, there's picnic tables in this area right now that's blank. We were going to relocate them to the center of the playground area closer to the fence and skirt those with concrete as well, so that way you don't, you can fully traverse. Instead of using mats and just having one set of seating, now you have a nice big flat concrete area that can be cleaned.
A bit of seating.
And then have more seating in that area. So that was our proposed plan for Lane Field. And then this is School Lane. So School Lane now, again, is all grass, proposed parking area. And then a walkway to get from the parking area across, and it will lead all the way to the existing basketball, basketball court. And these picnic tables are existing and those will remain there, but we're going to do the same thing that we did at Lane Field and just come across and have a concrete skirt around those picnic tables so that they're accessible. One thing that we didn't put in here, but again, Mr. Ferry had added when he talked to the concrete contractors off this end of the basketball court, going back towards Palmer Street. It's, this depiction is not really accurate. It's probably only about twenty-five feet. There's a gate here, so there's a, will be another walkway. So if anybody coming in from Palmer Street can act, have an accessible walkway to the basketball court on that end as well. And I think that's all we have for parks. We all, we didn't do anything for the North Dayton site just yet, because that's still kind of under discussion about what's going to happen there, whether we get the playground done or or anything else. So that's still kind of up in the air, so we didn't do too much with that.
So I think between all of the playgrounds, between the the Town Walkway for the Town Hall ramp, the things in Newtown Hall, Old Town Hall with the ramp, the rest, the restrooms, etc., the counters and the, and the windows that are being redone now and so forth as well. The drop boxes, there's a lot that we're accomplishing in terms of what we're doing in the, not all of our public areas, obviously, there's a lot more to go, but at least in a lot of the areas where there's high traffic. We're hoping that this gets approved. We'll have to just obviously wait and see what happens. If not, then we'll go back to the drawing board and figure out how we get these projects done one at a time as opposed to all within the next seven or eight months. So Nicole, do you have any questions on any of this at this point?
No, not that I can think of.
Okay, all right. That grant went in actually as of, as of October eighth, just so you know, and they say it's about a two-month turnaround until we hear what's going to happen. The stage I already discussed, the policies, I gave you an idea of what I'm going to also be doing separately with regard to policies is I'm going to update the grievance process for our commission to look at. If anybody has any issues or questions with regard to ADA complaints or grievances, there's a new template that was just issued by MOD, and I want to get the new template, see if it's vastly different or if it's anything we need to change. And if it is, we'll make those changes. We can all review it at our next meeting, I hope. And if we do need to make any changes, then we will also send it to that Board of Selectmen for review and discussion and hopefully approval. With regard to other policies, I'm wondering whether or not we want to establish any other policies or procedures more etched in stone with regard to public meetings and public meeting rules for accessibility or how far in advance, and I fall into this certainly myself as the coordinator here. We need to make sure we post meetings, announcements and agendas for everything in the town, not just C O T, but for everything. Right now, there's that two-day, do we want to maybe request asking a consideration change to three-day or five-day or anything? And I say that because if we have anybody with disability who needs an alternative format sometimes, today is a very tight turnaround. And in a conversation I was having with the state earlier today and just a general meeting about public laws and public access for public meetings, they highly recommend that towns that have two-day turnaround consider changing it to a longer period of time. So maybe that's the discussion we can all have, and I'll put it on the next agenda to have more of a discussion, but if it's in everybody's head.
Nicole, did you get the email about the MOD's webinar?
Yeah, I signed up for the second date. I think it's the nineteenth, I'm not sure.
Yeah, whatever, one was like three in the afternoon.
Yeah, I think it was that one.
Yep.
Yeah, I was having a trouble with getting a lot of different emails in town, and we didn't get it fixed until late last week. And I had so much to go through, I didn't even find it until the other day. So that's why it got out so late. Now everything is the way it should be. So as I said in my, my email, I apologize to people got it late. I don't know if there were any, if there was anybody from that in the joint, frankly, I know they had about forty people participating, but I don't know who actually did it. So number seven is to former committees formally have a committee now because we're missing a couple of people to work with Parks and Rec, and I know Kevin, you and I talked about doing that together. Nicole, would you like to be part of that with us, or I don't know how your time schedule is?
Right now I'm a little swamped due to recent things, but.
Okay, well, if you, if we can find a few new good members, this would be a great project. I'm going to reach out to a couple of those people this, I think, this week and this weekend and see if they're willing to volunteer and wanting to volunteer to be members as well. Because again, we do need a few new members to do some of this stuff. So any thoughts there, Kev?
Well, I think, yeah, we can. I think even out, I think you and I at one point, I believe, did form a subcommittee of just you and I.
Yeah, and that still stands.
And that still stands. And maybe we want to bring in some individuals, and it doesn't matter either from the community, from other committees and commissions. So I obviously, I don't think we'll have to do a little homework and find some people who want to get involved. And then we'll kind of tie them back into that at a later date.
All right, so maybe we can talk about, think about other committees or commissions or who else from town might be, you know, be able to be involved in this process for us, because I think, you know, you and I have our ideas potentially, but then there's also financial resources and other town departments who would be involved in the planning and so forth as well.
Right, and I'd like to, you know, it would be nice to get
some other feedback.
Some other feedback just from the public. I mean, it's you know, so.
Yeah, I agree with you. Accessible playground. I know, you know, there's talk of which playground or would or wouldn't be accessible playgrounds. I know that there's, there's, right now, there's the request for the Capitol Committee to get proposals as well. I'm thinking that it makes sense to think of, at least preliminarily, a proposal in for, for dollars for an accessible playground for the, for the Capital Expense Committee. It doesn't have to be location, location, location yet. But I think if we can come up with a dollar figure for an accessible playground and related facilities that are, you know, in co-join with that, it might be worth potentially submitting something that has to be in by the eighteenth. I don't know, Nicole, if you have any time to work on that at all, or are you Kevin to work on that with me?
Um, well, if it's playground related, I mean, I, I have the time and I'll probably have, you know, the information, the financial information to at least give
Give it some
idea of costs, so.
Okay. All right, so we can, if we can put a subcommittee meeting together and connect with each other on that, that would be really good. Okay, thank you. So I'm going to go to new business. Dayton Middle School. So about six weeks ago, I received a call from, seven weeks ago maybe now, from a parent and then a teacher as well, and then a third person who is a citizen and goes there for meetings. So all of And then a third person who is a citizen and goes there for meetings. So all within the same week, uh, there were calls about the curb cuts and the ramp areas at the middle school and how they were falling apart, breaking, cracking. Um, just frankly, in horrible shape, which has been that way for quite a period of time. So in the past seven weeks, um, I have met with the, um, director of facilities at the school department with Damian. And I've met, uh, with Kirsten, the specialized director as well, and with Mr. Wheeler, the principal of the middle school. And we had put aside, uh, different ideas on what we wanted to do, how we wanted to attack the the different curb cuts in the area because there are a few in the front, starting with the main office area. And then there are a few in the back which are off the cafeteria and then off the other side of the school as well. So where we stand now is the, um, front office area, as you come into the main office of the middle school, um, that has fully been approved. The construction started about a week and a half ago. I sent some pictures to Kevin to get a look at because I visually can't see them, um, that I got late last night. Um, and they're finishing pouring the concrete portion of all of that today. And then the railings have been ordered and hopefully the railings will be installed by early next week.
This will give, I'm sharing the picture. I have all three pictures. I upload them to the computer. So what you're looking at Nicole is the, um, the main entry, like the main entry door. Um, that's the first part that they worked on. And then that was the main sidewalk. That here was the, that the curve where the curb cut is gonna be is kind of in the unfinished area right now.
Okay.
So this part of the project should be finished by early next week. And then as you're facing this, the entrance area there, um, which will have that long railing that will go now for, I think it's about twelve feet. Um, to accommodate what we need to do with thirteen feet. Um, which is great and it'll be on both sides. It will not just be on one side, by the way, and it'll also have the lower rung. So they're following the specs completely of what we need to do to make this fully accessible, the right angle. If anything, again, we're gonna end up with a lower grade than we actually are required to, which is wonderful. They're working on the drainage there too, and they've mitigated the drainage so that it can't build up with ice or anything like that. Um, just to the left of that, which isn't in a picture yet, about twenty feet, there's another curb cut that goes to the library again, which is in horrible shape. This is another area that was actually brought to my attention by the, uh, by a member of the Buildings and Grounds Committee, the Parents Buildings and Grounds Committee. That area is going to be addressed next. So hopefully that will start within the next week or two. Again, these are all separate purchase orders for approval. It's not just one giant purchase order, uh, for each part of the project. And then again, as you look at the school, same entry and where the pictures are now, but down to the right, which is not there now, there's another entrance for the cafeteria area where a lot of our residents go for public meetings. And again, the accessibility to that was very difficult because the curb cut was uh, not correct. It was chopped away. It was broken. Uh, if you had a wheelchair or a walker, you couldn't go up smoothly. That has now been all scraped out. It has to be resurfaced yet. This is part of the whole project. But it was, it was scraped out last week. Um, so now it has to be resurfaced. So that that'll again provide smooth, that doesn't require railing. But it, because it's low enough, but it does require resurfacing. That will be done hopefully in the next week or ten days. And then the other areas that I alluded to out in the back of the auditorium area or the cafeteria where they have the emergency entrance slash exit there, that has also been, uh, scraped down and ground down and is being resurfaced. On the other side of the school in the back area where there's another emergency entrance off the wing that there that goes out to the play area, same thing. That is all being resurfaced as well. So we're getting all of this done in a matter of about eight or nine weeks, maybe ten weeks total, which I think is really good. Um, and I think this is just the beginning, I hope, of getting things done within the schools so that the residents of Dayton can really not just see that the things are getting done, but be able to be fully participatory. At least in getting to different meetings, events, class activities for children, things like that. So we're really changing the ability to have public access to these facilities. Um, once we get done with the middle school, then we'll figure out where we go from there, but we're working on this now and then we'll see if we need to do more at the middle school and the outdoor or go, as I said, go down to the elementary school and, and, and see where that goes. So.
And I have one question.
Sure.
How was what we're doing at the, um, middle school? How was that funded?
That's funded by the schools.
Okay.
The school, the school is, is taking care of that. That is not being funded by the town. So the school department agreed to pick up the funding for that completely, just to do the one ramp, including the railing. In, at that main entrance there is roughly with everything, probably about thirty-five to forty thousand dollars. I'd have to add it all up because it's different invoices. Um, it's, it's not, and these are not inexpensive to do some of these. The goal is, the goal hopefully in which we did very well and the school department really did work with us was to, uh, keep these in a situation where they were all able to eat, to be funded and approved. Um, in a, in a way that was conduct conducive to getting it done quickly. And we were able to find a way to do that, which was great. So, um, I think that's something that we can, once this is all finished, be able to be pretty proud of. Any, do you have any other questions or thoughts, Nicole, or?
No, that was it. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Um, Kevin, do you have any thoughts about any of that?
Uh, nope, no thoughts. Um, just thank you for staying on top of it and keeping them moving because it's, it's been going good with the exception of the weather from last.
Absolutely. In fact, I'll be out there with the contractor tomorrow. So tomorrow morning. Um, and then I did get a request also, um, at the meeting last week of the Board of Selectmen, um, there was a resident who, uh, brought up an issue with regard to the sidewalk on Center Street, the recently done sidewalks and then the past couple of years on Center Street. Um, so I will be looking at that, I hope tomorrow again as well. Um, and looking at those sidewalks to see what was done, what wasn't done. Um, if the areas where there are curbs or curb cuts are okay, or if they're, they're, they're not. If you, when you go around telephone poles, uh, if there's enough with wheelchairs, et cetera. So, um, this was done before I was on board, but it's still within the last few years. So my hope is to be able to take a good look at it uh, and determine whether or not it meets the criteria or not for ADA accessibility with regard to the sidewalk. Um, I don't know if it was done with town money or grant money. I haven't gotten that far into it yet, frankly. Um, if it was done with grant money, then it may be a question of what was the requirement of the grant as well. So, uh, we'll have to see where that goes, but I'm gonna take a look at tomorrow, uh, or uh, over the weekend, certainly by the first of the week, the latest, so that I can get back to the Board of Selectmen and give them at least a preliminary understanding of what is and what isn't. Um, having said that also, um, as everybody knows, we did get that grant for the hundred nineteen thousand dollars. Um, I also sent a request to, uh, Tom Ferry, asking for an update on that and where that's at. I'm gathering from what I heard at town, town meeting the other night. Um, and reference made to that, that, that work is starting or going to be starting. Um, so, um, as that's starting, I will do my best to be involved in looking at all the different intersections. Um, if we need any, anything else, or if I can use any of your eyes, literally tell me with that, I might call on you to ask if you can put in a few minutes here and there and meet me at certain spots for some visuals or for some pictures if we need to. That's kind of where things are at right now. You know, we're, we're moving along, um, slowly but surely, we're getting questions from residents with regard to, uh, their streets and if we can have sign postings for handicapped, you know, person, et cetera, et cetera. Um, I'm kind of putting those on the back burner right now because there's these other things that we're concentrating on. Any thoughts?
Uh, no, I think not on that. Um, before we, um, started today, I, Nicole and I had kind of just said briefly, um, is there any interest to move back to in-person meetings for our commission or what are your thoughts on that, Jonathan?
I'm okay with it. I couldn't do it if we did in person or if we did it by hybrid version. Um, I certainly can't run a Zoom meeting from a person, from a location. I, I have enough troubles it is frankly, as you know. Um, I couldn't do it that way. And my concern is that at least for now, I wonder if we should stick this way or go to try to do a hybrid version because we have people who may wanna either join us as members or participate who have disability. Um, they may also, and other residents, they may not feel comfortable yet coming out.
Well, I'm, I'm not saying going full exclusively, full in-person, but you know, just in some form.
Yeah, if we, if we, if we, if there's a way to do a hybrid version.
Um, I can bring a laptop and, and host it.
Okay, if, if you can bring a laptop and host and we can work it out so that whoever is participating remotely can not only see us, but join in and we can hear it. Um, I don't know if we need to connect with Dave on that or not with, from cable to see if there's something we need to do.
Well, no, because we don't need to be on cable. Um, we can just record to the cloud and, and have a Zoom link.
Okay. And if we can do that, I, as long as we can hear whoever wants to participate, I'm fine with that. I have no.
Yeah, I think that would be great. I mean, it wouldn't be much different than what we're doing now in regards for folks that wanna, um, from the town participate. Um, it would just probably just be a little bit easier for us to actually be together and, um, facilitate things that way.
Yeah, it's just, I think it's easier to have a conversation in person than it is through here. It's like you're always worried about interrupting somebody or somebody being unmuted or blogging and all this stuff, so.
I always get accused of doing that and I just did it in fact, so.
Interrupt you if I can like just give you a little whack or something, you know, it's tough on here.
Uh, we're not, we're not doing, no, we're done with in-person. It's over. I'm sorry. But yeah, no, I think so. My suggestion is hearing, hearing that, um, two suggestions actually. One is, I think it was mentioned by Ken and Kevin, you may have said too, is, the question was, what about once a month? And I think because we have a few things that we're just, I wanna focus on and try to just to wrap up at least a little bit. I would ask that we list that this month, we're on the, we'd be on the fourth and the eighteenth. So I would ask that we do meet on the eighteenth. Um, hopefully we'll know by our, about our grant by then, not, um, we'll have, we'll have, we'll also be able to report on what we wanna do for a capital, potential capital project and so forth as well. Um, I don't know how the two of you feel about twice in December and then starting in January, once a month for the, maybe the first Thursday.
I, I, December, I would, I'm, I'm gonna be saying no, because I know I'll say yes and then December will come and it will, it's just a nightmare of a month. Um, I don't know if Kevin feels the same way with small.
I'm in the, I'm in the same boat to be hon- I, like, I'll meet on the eighteenth. I don't have a problem with that. I, I'd prefer not to, but I will, um, only because it, the months with like especially significant holidays, Thanksgiving and stuff like that and everything else.
Then let me ask the two of you because I don't mean this disrespectfully of Ken by any means. I know Ken thinks once a month because his schedule is also crazy. And as we all know, and Ken technically is, is not a voting member. Um, so if the two of you would prefer, we could start once a month as of December. So, or as of now, I'll put it that way. That's what you would prefer. And I would suggest then that we go to the first Thursday of every month.
That, that works better for me because I feel like sometimes with the every two weeks because everybody's schedule is so hectic, a lot of times we can't get something done in those two weeks. So it's like, sometimes we have a meeting and it's like beating a dead horse because we didn't get a chance to accomplish it because there wasn't enough time, so.
And I think that's okay because if we have some subcommittee work to do, we can get it done too. Um, so I mean, I'm okay with this. If, if you guys are okay with this. And again, hopefully we can find a few other people who wanna come on board with us in the next couple of months. So I guess if the two of you are okay with this, if we could have a motion by someone.
Well, let me just think quick. It's, it's always the, it's the fir-, it's gonna be the first Thursday.
It's normally first and third.
Okay. No, I just, I just wanna look at the calendar while we're having this discussion. So I will make a motion that we starting immediately, we meet once a month, being the first Thursday of the month and the next meeting being December second.
I second that. Nicole Mello.
Um.
Or no?
Yes. Okay. No, I was, I was, I was because I had to think of the date. That's all. I was thinking it was the wrong date, but he's right. There's thirty days this month, not thirty-one. Um, so we have a motion on the floor to begin once a month as of the first Thursday of the month, beginning with December first. Same time, four thirty. Um, that's the first motion that I have here. Do I, and I had a second. Is there any more discussion?
Nope.
No discussion. We'll move the question, Nicole.
Um, I.
Kevin?
I.
And Jonathan, I. Okay, that's great. And then the second question is going to be whether we do a hybrid version. If we do a hybrid version, I just need to check with, um, uh, Board of Selectmen's Office and make sure that that location is available on the first Thursday of every month at four thirty. I certainly know there are other meetings that sometimes start at six and I'm sure we will always be done before that. So if, 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 if it is available beginning December, do we wanna do the hybrid version at Old Town Hall?
I, I say yes, if it's Kevin and you are okay with it.
Okay. So can I have a motion to go back to a hybrid version at Old Town Hall beginning December first, assuming it's available?
What'd we say, December second?
December, December second. I'm sorry, my bad.
Okay. Um, I motioned that we go return to hybrid meetings starting December second.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Okay, any discussion? No? All in favor, Kevin?
I.
Jonathan is an I. Nicole?
I.
And I will put, I'm gonna just add the caveat, we just have to make sure it's available. Um, obviously if it's not, then we'll have to, we'll revisit for, for December and January and I'll, I'll let you guys know. Um, and do we have any public input, in, input tonight? If Woody is there, if he or anybody else is and they have anything to share?
Yeah, I'm here. Um, I really don't have any public input. Thank you again for everything you do and I'm looking forward to seeing that ramp at Town Hall taken care of. I think that should be a priority. And I would like to see an elevator installed in Town Hall.
So actually, just so you know, Mr. Woods, um, at, when we submitted the grant, we submitted the grant with exhibits in order of our priority and the Town Hall ramp was on the top of our list.
That was, that was the very first priority. So they can, they can tell us whether they will fund all of the grant or different parts. And that's why we did it that way, Mr. Woods, so that they may say, we'll give you thirteen thousand for this, but not for something else. So we're hoping that they'll, they'll, when they look at the KMA report and see how off the ramp is now, that they'll find that there's a real need for it. That's what we're hoping.
You think we'll ever get an elevator?
I think that's something separately for the Capital Outlay Committee to talk about. Um, and I don't mean that sarcastically. I'm not trying to, I think, I think it depends on whether or not they want, they wanna keep Town Hall the way it is, whether they wanna add to the Town Hall either up or out. Whether they, you know, whatever they wanna do. I think that that's gonna be part of the overall discussion. I think there's certainly a need for an elevator. No doubts, obviously. So people with disability or not, don't have to go all the way around to get from point A to point B. Um, but I think that the jury's still out as to how the building's gonna be reconfigured. So that's the best answer I can give you.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Thank you. Thank you. So so for our next three meetings, um, we, we pretty much agreed they're gonna be on the first Thursday of each month at four thirty, hopefully at Old Town Hall in the hybrid version. Um, and we'll see how that goes. If it works out, we'll keep it until, um, we're able to go back to fully safely everything.
Yeah, I'll just rattle those off quick so we, we know it's gonna be, uh, December the second, uh, January sixth. And then February third, just so it's, it's out there.
That works.
Okay. All right.
Anything else, Kevin or Nicole?
No, I was gonna jump the gun and make a motion.
Okay, go for it.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn at five thirty-one P M.
I second that, Nicole.
Okay, and, um, any discussion? Should we talk for an hour now?
No.
No.
Okay. Hearing none, uh, Nicole?
I.
Kevin?
I.
And Jonathan, I. And Nicole, again, congratulations on your appointment for the ten as the, as the nurse.
Thank you so much.
Do we, do we get to call you now if we have aches and pains?
Please don't. No, I'm just kidding.
It's all good. It's all good. That's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Kevin, thank you for hosting as always.
And Jonathan, just so you know, I, I've been doing minutes as, as we were going, so I'll, uh, And Jonathan, just so you know, I I've been doing minutes as as we were going, so I'll uh. And I have them from last time we met, so maybe make.
Okay.
Next agenda, just put it in there so we can approve them.
Okay, I wasn't sure, so that's why I didn't. And I know last the last meeting was very short, so that's why I didn't.
Yeah, I have those two though, so I'll type them up. I'll send them over to both of you in an email. So in our next meeting, we have them and we can approve them.
Thank you for doing that, Kevin.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate it a lot.
Have a good night, everybody.
Both of you. Thank you. Have a great evening. Bye bye.